Okay, I call the June 4th, 2020. Meeting of the Village of East Dundee Planning and Zoning Commission and Historic Commission to order. Catherine, do we have to make a statement regarding the Open Meetings Act?
Um, Brad, can you help with that?
No, I don't think we do.
Okay, fine.
Okay.
Okay, so could we have the roll call, please?
Scarpelli?
Here.
Holloman?
Yes.
Meyer?
I can't hear you.
Was that Meyer or no?
The mic is off.
Apke?
Here.
Dennis?
Yes, here.
Bernstein? Shaw?
Yes.
Musket?
Here.
Brewer?
Here.
Could everyone put their devices on mute until they're ready to speak?
Okay, so we have a quorum?
We do, we have one, two, three, four, five, six of the nine, yes.
Okay. First item of business is the approval of the minutes of the May 7th, 2020 meeting. Can I hear a motion, or does anyone have any changes, or a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion, we approve the May 7th, 2020, planning and zoning minutes as presented.
I'll second.
Scarpelli?
Yes.
Second.
Is Holloman there? Meyer? Apke?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Bernstein? Shaw?
Yes.
Musket?
Yes.
Brewer?
Yes. Okay, so those minutes are approved. Our next item is any public comment on issues that are not related to things on the agenda tonight. Is there anything else? If it's not on the, if it's not on the agenda, though, we don't, it should be something for not on the agenda. Okay, I don't hear any public comments. The first item on the agenda is Historic Commission, certificate appropriateness for signage. And I'm not sure, is this, is this like no-nos or non-nos, Italian kitchen and cafe?
No-nos, Italian kitchen and cafe.
Okay, it's no-nos?
Yes.
Okay. And this is basically to look at a modification to the front, not really a modification of the front, just an addition or a change of the order, correct?
Correct.
Does anybody on the, on the commission have any questions on this? Guess not. Any comments? Okay. Could I hear a motion to approve the certificate of appropriateness for this signage?
Second.
Scarpelli was the first, Apke was the second?
Correct.
Scarpelli?
Yes.
Apke?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Musket?
Yes.
Brewer?
Yes. Okay, anything else? Okay, on the new business. I'd like to hear a motion to open a public hearing regarding a request for a variance on the lot at 509 Maxwellton Road.
Commissioner Brewer, I would make a motion that we table this subject until we are given the proper documentation, namely, a ordinance of the village creating a single lot, large enough in which to house both the principal residence and the accessory building. That has not been provided, we have not been provided a, a plat of the lot, and until we do so, I don't believe we can vote on this.
Okay, is Chris here?
Yeah.
Chris, do you want to make a, any comments here?
Uh, the, the owner who is petitioning for this variance owns the entire parcel of 2.4 acres. The, the concern Frank has is that he has not recorded a plat of consolidation of the multiple lots that he owns, which he, he has agreed to do and would, would have to do before any permits were issued. So, the issue at hand with, for the plant commission is whether or not you, you would grant him a variance for the setbacks to, to save the trees that he wants to save. So, you, you can take it from there.
Thank you.
Commissioner Brewer, I, in order to consolidate the lots, that will have to be done in the form of a public hearing. I don't know why everything just...
No, no, I don't think we have anything to do with consolidating the lots. Isn't that the county, or the township?
No, that, that, that would be a, a plat of subdivision, which they have to file with the village. It, it requires a public hearing at the village level, and, because the, the county and the assessor have nothing to do with plants of subdivision within the village limits.
Okay.
I think that would be out of this commission's, you know, authority, you know, that, as Chris mentioned, the question at hand here is...
Who's, hold it, who's speaking?
Brad.
Brad? Okay.
So, the question at hand is the variances here, that would be outside of, you know, this commission's authority with that. So, I, it really, the commission should be focusing on the variances here, not that. And I know Frank, respect your, your questions and opinions, and I know we've tried to address those outside of the meeting here, but, for this purpose here, we're looking at the variances.
Frank, you want to respond?
Excuse me, Brad? I, I was just kind of curious, if you're going to be going ahead and, and voting and discussing the variances before permits are even issued, are we not putting the cart before the horse on this? I mean...
Who's, now who's, who's this?
That's Jeff Linum.
Okay.
Village Board member.
Yes, I know.
Yeah, well, I mean, the variances are approved, like any process, and then come to, you know, what they decide here would ultimately come to the village board.
So, we couldn't, we could not issue a permit, Jeff, without the variances for where they want to put the structure.
Well, no, I, I understand that, but I think at the heart of the issue is, is just the actual, not so much the structure itself, but the land that it's going to go on, I don't know that, as it sits right now, it follows ordinance, Chris. I mean, if you, if, if my understanding of the size of the structure and the frontage that would be necessary to accommodate it, this lot does not fulfill that. So, to go ahead and talk about setbacks before we can even determine whether or not it's allowable by ordinance, really is, as I say, putting the cart before the horse here.
Well, there's, there's, there's a property across the street that has, that got a variance to put a garage up, they're three feet away from the, the front property line, and it's on a separate lot than the house is sitting on.
Right.
And that was granted by the builder back in 1990. So, they did not consolidate anything there.
Yeah, and that, that one got through, and it shouldn't have. And I, and regardless of, you know, what has been happened in the past, I don't know if it would be prudent to cho, to go ahead and, and, you know, compound the issue by allowing the same sort of thing to continue. That's my only point.
Well, it wouldn't continue, because the permits wouldn't be issued unless the lot was consolidated into one. So, if he, if he, if the plant commission determined that they wanted...
Makes kind of a moot point, voting on a variance for a setback.
Yes, I, I kind of agree with Jeff. For a lot that doesn't exist. Frank, could you, could you make a motion that we table this situation until the village Board or whoever straightens out the whole lot property situation?
Since we're still in the, since we're still in the public hearing, do we want to hear from any of the residents?
We, we, no, we have not opened a public hearing.
We haven't opened a public hearing.
No, I, I made a motion that we table this item.
Hey, John, it's Brad. I believe Jennifer is going to be signing on as well here, and I know she wanted to make a comment, and I don't know if she's on yet or not, but she should be coming on. We could just hold on.
Well, it just appears to me that we've already got village trustees that are questioning what's going on here with Jeff. And to be honest, I kind of feel the same way. You know, I've seen conflicting things, you know, about the permit being issued, and then I hear permits aren't issued, and, you know, I think we need to have some more information provided to us before we can make any decisions. I mean, you know, to, to vote to allow variances to save a couple of trees, now before we've established if this can even be built, or how it's going to be done, is, seems to me like it's something that we need to table and bring up again.
Yeah, John, and just, just from my position, I, I don't want to give anybody the impression I'm trying to roadblock this, because I'm not. What I am trying to do is to make sure that the ordinances that we have in place are followed, and if they need to be altered, that we do that first. The only reason is, well, I mean, it's the obvious reason, is that we, we set a precedent. And the, the worry that I have as a trustee, and certainly as a resident, is when that precedent is set and then challenged, if we decide down the road, or another board in the future decides to disallow a particular request, it opens up the village to some liability, and if, even if it, even if it didn't, if we were challenged, it would be in court, the village has got to go to court, answer the bell, pay the fee to go to court, or the, the lawyer fees to get us there, it's just an expense that can be eliminated or avoided.
Well, and Jeff, I've, you know, I've, I've been on this commission for a while, so has Frank. I think we're aware that we've already had an issue like that up in this area, that just kind of got over about a year ago, that went on for three years. So, you know, I, I just think there needs to be more clarification, and I, I would tend to agree with Frank, and I would maybe like to hear a second for Frank's motion and have a vote.
I'll second it.
Catherine, could we have a vote?
You'd like me to take the roll call now?
Yes, please. We have a motion and a second to table, table the action on this, on this public hearing.
Has Jennifer joined?
Yeah, she's, she should be calling in, I got her on a text here, and I know she wanted to make a comment. If we could just hold on one, one minute here.
Oh, I see Gwen has joined.
Gwen's been here the whole time.
Oh, I didn't have her on.
I had my mute on.
Oh. When did you join, Gwen, were you here during the minutes approval, or?
She was here about five minutes before him.
I had my mute on. Sorry.
Okay.
She was here before I was.
Did you vote in favor of the minutes and in favor of the no-no signage?
I did.
Okay, thank you.
It looks like Jennifer's on, Catherine, or maybe...
She's muted.
I'm here.
There she is.
Is there, is there some questions I need to address?
We have a, John, this is John Brewer, we have a motion before us, which has been seconded to table the public hearing regarding the variation request at, whatever, what's the, I don't have, I've lost my...
509.
509 Maxwellton.
Okay.
Yes.
And this is regard, is this regarding the question about the consolidation of lots?
It's regarding a whole lot of, it's regarding a whole lot of questions on that property.
Okay, okay, so just as some background here, before we do a motion to table, because we do have to be considerate of the petitioner's time, which is one of our fellow residents, so we don't want to table these types of items unless we're absolutely sure that there's a reason to be tabling this. So, they have done their work, the building inspector has instructed them to consolidate their lots, and they have consolidated the pins, they do have one pin now, they have one property tax bill. I believe that they need to possibly record the plat of consolidation, but I'm not sure. I don't believe any subdivision process is required, if there were to be a subdivision process required by the village board, that would be at the village board level and not the planning and zoning level. The section 155 of the village code allows for the building inspector to withhold a permit until such consolidation takes place, which the petitioners know that that has to be completed prior to the issuance of the permit, so that would be held by the building official until such time that we've received the plat of consolidation. At this time, I don't believe that the plat of consolidation has to go before the village, because it is not a subdivision, but we can confirm that, prior discussions with the county have indicated that it would be a county issue only, because there are no easements or other factors that are going into consideration. So, really what we need to discuss tonight is whether there's a hardship, whether they proved a hardship, I think they have two primary reasons, that they're justifying their hardship, and that is the trees, the protection of the trees, and then the flip of the land. So, I would urge the commission not to table this item, but to make a motion, and we can have that contingent upon the consolidation of property. Thank you.
Jennifer, I made the motion, this is Frank Scarpelli. I don't believe that we can enact a variance on a lot that does not exist. Right, right now, today, as we sit here, the applicant has 13 lots, nine or 13, some configuration of number of lots, they don't have a single lot, and the village does have to pass an ordinance. It may not be before this commission, but I do believe the village has to hold a public hearing, and I believe the village has to enact an ordinance recognizing the nine lots being consolidated into a single lot, before the county, the recorder of deeds will record that as a verifiable deeded instrument. So, I, I don't feel comfortable passing, or even discussing and talking about hardships and different things pertaining to this parcel of property, until this is in fact a parcel of property, and not nine separate parcels of property.
Yes, I do understand your, your position, Commissioner Scarpelli, but we have reviewed our village code and...
Do we lose her?
I have no sound for Jennifer.
I, I think, I think her internet froze.
Yeah. Aw, man. I will...
She's back.
Sorry about that, lost internet connection. If the village board does have the jurisdiction at the time, then they certainly could deny that consolidation. But I, again, once again, we've reviewed our village code, we've had issues like this before us, and it, this is a perfectly fair, public hearing, properly noticed, with one consolidated pin number. So, I do urge you to either approve or deny this motion, and, and that recommendation will go before the village board. So, I think I've answered that to the best of my ability, I can't provide you with any further explanation, other than that topic is not, is not the decision, this commission is not the deciding factor of that, of that decision. So, we don't need to consider that at this level, just the variance. Thank you.
At this moment, at this time, I will not withdraw my motion.
Nor will I withdraw my second.
Roll call, Catherine.
Okay, this is a roll, roll, roll call to table. Scarpelli?
Yes.
Apke?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Bernstein?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Musket?
Yes.
Brewer?
Yes.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Okay, so, item one is tabled, pending resolution of other issues. I will move to a public hearing regarding our number two item, public hearing, to consider a request to rezone the property from R1 Single Family District to M1 Limited Manufacturing District, for this, you know, for the development of the Caterpillar Distribution Center.
Chairman Brewer, I will make a motion that we open the public hearing for pin number 0325300-011 and 0325300012, to consider a request of rezoning a property from R1 Single Family District to an M1 Limited Manufacturing District.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay, start off a public hearing here, do we have a presenter for this action?
John, it's Brad.
Pardon?
Working with Altoffer, Cat, and Plody on this project. The, the project's going to be located, as you can see in your packet, on the south side of the intersection at Route 72 and Christina Drives. Before, at Monday's, this past Monday's village board meeting, the village board did approve the annexation of this property and for this project. So, before the commission tonight, as we're discussing here, is the zoning request, as well as there are four variances, as indicated in your packet. We do have representatives on the call here from Altoffer and Plody, I don't know if they would like to do a quick overview intro.
If anyone would like to, please feel free.
Yeah.
Maybe an overview of the project, that would be nice.
Yeah, good evening, Commission. My name's David Plody, President of Plody Properties. Very excited to be involved in this and bring Caterpillar into Village of East Dundee, which passed unanimously on Monday night. In, in doing so, the property, which is along the backside, all the way up to 72, the backside of the old Walmart, and would be encompassed by Christina extending across Route 72 South, creates the lot, which the Altoffer Caterpillar dealership will be going on. It'll, I think it'll be a feather in the, in the cap of East Dundee in general, to have a Fortune 500 company like Caterpillar, so very excited about that. The, there's a few items that they're asking for some variances on, and obviously, we have to change the zoning, so that this use fits into it. I think if you look at the neighboring mining operation that we have, it fits very well, and does not affect any residential whatsoever. The building type and the usage is what is in the area across the street, and so therefore, I think it falls very well into the surrounding area uses, from a plan, P and Z standpoint. Also, on the, on the phone with me today is Todd Altoffer, I mean Derek Altoffer, I'm sorry, excuse me, got the... And Derek, with, the neat thing for me is, my father used to do business with Patton Tractor back in the 60s, started buying equipment, and Patton Tractor, being a longtime Caterpillar dealer, is relocating from Elmhurst, and the Altoffer Company, which is also family-owned, third-generation company, bought that. So, two family companies coming into the Village of East Dundee, all this melds together very well. Speaking to the actual variances they're looking for, I'll leave that up to either Dave Hickson from Altopper Caterpillar, or Derek Altoffer himself, or their builder, if you have any questions on the building and so forth, you can discuss that with Ken from New, Newhausen, from Northern Builders, I just butchered his last name.
Okay, sir, thank you, thank you. Those variances are actually part of a second public hearing here, this is just one to change the property, to change the zoning. I guess I'd just like to ask a question, is, again, this is John Brewer, the chairman, the business is going to be here, sales, new products, repair, what exactly are we doing here? Everything?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is Derek Altoffer, and this specific facility, we envision will focus on our Caterpillar construction products, so bulldozers, excavators, skidsteers, big and small. We will sell, rent, service, and provide parts out of this facility. The details of the, the actual building itself is there, but it will be one of, I think, 10 other facilities, basically just like it in function, that we manage and operate across four different states. And as David mentioned, we're a family-owned business, we started back in 1957, our headquarters are in Cedar Rapids, Iowa, and I do represent the third generation, but we are proud Caterpillar representatives, and we're very optimistic and hopeful we can extend this business and bring it to your community, if, if allowed.
Thank you, guys. Brad?
Chairman Brewer, this is Commissioner Scarpelli. I guess maybe Brad could answer this, or Joe Hines. Is it a function of the village that all newly annexed property come in as R1?
No. No, Frank, I, can I speak to that? I think it's R1, because that was what was put on the comprehensive plan back in 2002.
By, by default, newly annexed parcels come in as R1.
Okay, thank you.
Does any of the other commission members have any questions? Can I hear a motion to close the public hearing on, on this item?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any...
Okay, we good on that one?
Commissioner Brewer, I'll make a motion that we approve the rezoning from the R1 Single Family District to the M1 Limited Manufacturing District, for the pin number 0325300-011. The details of the, the actual building itself is there, but it will be one of, I think, 10 other facilities, basically just like it in function, that we manage and operate across four different states. And as David mentioned, we're a family-owned business. We started back in 1957. Our headquarters are in Cedar Rapids, Iowa. And I do represent the third generation, but we are proud Caterpillar representatives and we're very optimistic and hopeful we can extend this business and bring it to your community if, if allowed.
Thank you, guys. Brad?
Chairman Brewer, this is Commissioner Scarpelli. I guess maybe Brad could answer this, or Joe Hines. Is it a function of the village that all newly annexed property come in as R1?
No, Frank, can I speak to that? I think it's R1 because that was what was put on the comprehensive plan back in 2002.
By default, newly annexed parcels come in as R1.
Okay, thank you.
Does any of the other commission members have any questions? Can I hear a motion to close the public hearing on this item?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any against?
Aye.
Okay, we good on that one?
Commissioner Brewer, I'll make a motion that we approve the rezoning from the R1 Single Family District to the M1 Limited Manufacturing District for the PIN number 0325-300-011 and 0325-300-012.
I'll second that, Steve Stenick.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, Catherine, can we have a roll call?
Scarpelli?
Yes.
Apke?
Yes.
Denick?
Yes.
Bernstein?
Yes.
Shock?
Yes.
Musket?
Yes.
And Brewer?
Yes. Now we need a motion to approve the findings of fact, please.
So moved.
Second?
Who seconded, I'm sorry?
Scarpelli.
Thank you. Scarpelli?
Yes.
Apke?
Yes.
Denick?
Yes.
Bernstein?
Yes.
Shock?
Yes.
Musket?
Yes.
Brewer?
Yes. Okay, moving on to item three, which is some variances that are required due to this annexation and change. And can I hear a motion to open a public hearing relating to PIN? I'll do it for you, Frank, 03-25-300-011 and 03-25-300-012.
So moved. Second, Scarpelli.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any against?
Okay, Brad, you wanna run through these?
Sure, we, so we have, yeah, we can, I don't know, does Althoffer or Plody wanna run through these? What your question for the variances?
I'm happy to take them. This is Ken Neinhaus with Northern. We're, one, we're requesting a relief for the new Christina Drive that's going to be put in to not, put in a cul-de-sac in there and allow for a three-sided turnaround in the event someone was to pull into Christina Drive and by mistake and not be pulling into Althoffer. Second, we're requesting relief for a variance from solid fencing on, or I'm sorry, from chain link fence. We're proposing to put a solid fence in the front of the property of very high grade. I believe I, I sent in some samples on that. The property to the west abuts the Walmart. To the south is unimproved and would be unimproved for a very long time. And there is nothing adjacent on Christina Drive. So, plus, we were planning on putting in a black vinyl fence with black vinyl slats, something that would be very durable for the project and not maintenance as some board-on-board fence or something like that. So that's the reason for our, our request. We have another request in the storage yard in the back to have an aggregate, stone aggregate area for, for display overflow. Their heavy equipment is obviously very, it wears the surfaces of any concrete. This would be for seasonal, seasonal storage, and that's what they have at their other facilities. It's more in keeping with what the true use really is. I don't have the fourth one in, in front of me. I think that was for relief of a sidewalk on Christina Drive as there would be no traffic or anyone going to anything other than a dead end to approach Althoffer's facility. So we did not want to invite the public to only their facility as there is no other walks in the area. That is our request.
Actually, the fourth, actually, the fourth variance was regarding the storage yard to be completely closed and screened with the solid wall or fence.
Yes, we're proposing to, we, we have agreed to, to close the south wall with, with a solid fence. So that we have agreed to.
Hi, everyone. This is Dave with Althoffer, Dave Hickson. I'm the vice president in charge of this project, too. I'll expand a little bit on what Ken said. Variance one, which would be the cul-de-sac, we also have some, some tight constraints to the east and the easement. That property is leased right now, and we cannot intrude on that by putting a cul-de-sac in there. We've made provision so that when you pull into the south entrance of the facility, the gating is far enough into the property that you, in a car or a truck or a truck and trailer, even a semi, could pull in and make a very active three-point turn. And then, and then the turnout of Christina Drive should arrive. So we have some space constraints there is the reason for that. On number two, which is the sanitary sewer extending from 25, I believe, is that Route 25 or right, Route 72 right there? So there's a request for about 1,120 linear feet of 10-inch sewer pipe for future development to the east. Althoffer will be connecting to a different point for the sewer and water. So we will not utilize that whatsoever. But we will, if the variance is granted, we would make an accommodation that we would grant easement to that property to put that in. And also, we would put a casing under Christina Drive so that there's no horizontal boring that would need to be done should there be development later on down the road. We feel that, that, that money would not be utilized by Althoffer at all as we are hooking in somewhere else. On the third variance, the yard to be with some crushed aggregate, what we're planning there, we're paving approximately acres of this property. That should be more than adequate for all of our equipment to sit on that property throughout most of the year. However, during the winter months, when we get rental inventory returned, or we may have an overflow of some equipment, we would like to, the remainder of that south end of the property, which faces nothing, we would like to have a variance there that we can put aggregate down for excess storage of equipment that would be of landscape padding underneath, so no, no weeds or anything. It would be about a three to four inch base of aggregate rock, and then it would be six, CA6 rock on top of that, which would be with no fines. So there should be no dust issues if we have no fines within that rock. And the fourth one, then, as we talk, the addition, the linear feed to go around this property is just massive, 23 acres. We want to provide a very aesthetically pleasing solid fence in the front. Anything that would be necessary there, we certainly will do. But additionally, a board-on-board fence for our millions and millions of dollars of equipment that we're gonna be storing there is gonna require maybe a little bit more of a security type of a fence to it. So that's why we like, you know, a solid, sturdier, excuse me, chain link fence, which would not be galvanized chain link that would rust and look terrible in years. It's totally vinyl coated and it would be black. And then we're looking at 95% privacy slats for that in black as well. So it should very nicely cover the rest of this property, but also give us the security that we need for this equipment. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Any questions from the commission?
Commissioner Scarpelli, Engineer Hines, I did not see any recommendation letters from you. Is, is there a recommendation letter pursuant to these variances?
Normally, I wouldn't do a recommendation letter. I would just call off the variances required. I can say that they've offered solutions to the requested variances with the cul-de-sac. They've provided, or are gonna provide an excess easement. Ken had said, and then also on the sanitary sewer, normally, we would require them to extend sewer and water service to the far extended of their property. But in this case, we're told that development is very unlikely in the near future. So we're having them provide a easement to allow for that sanitary sewer extension in the future. On the other two, like they talked about, the dustless surface, I'm okay with providing coarse aggregate that's not, that does not include fines, we would cut down the dust. And the fence is really aesthetic, so I really don't have an engineer in control of that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. This is John Brewer, the chairman. Could, could we run over the fences once? What are we gonna see from Route 72 when we look at your building and your parking lot? Will we be able to see the building, or are you gonna screen the whole thing off?
This is Ken Neinhaus. You, you really won't see much of the building. The building is set back approximately 500 feet from Route 72. And it rises close to 50 feet above Route 72.
Right, then there's retention bonds between 72 and the building.
There's landscaping in between.
Okay.
The fence that we are proposing in the front, basically, will look like a simulated stone. It's made of a high-quality material, something like PVC. It's hurricane-proof. And basically, we would have it made in a gray color that would be in the same color scheme as the building. So an appearance from Route 72 would be pretty much that of a stone wall.
Okay, and the, the balance of the property is with the chain link, et cetera, the black chain link with the screens and stuff, so. Correct? Okay, fine. So, any other, if there's no other questions, can we close the public hearing? Motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing. Scarpelli, Commissioner Scarpelli?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any against?
Okay, can we hear a motion to?
John?
John? Does anybody wanna discuss anything? Yeah, Chris.
This is Chris Renary. So there, there were two maps in your packet. One was the map of the territory annexed, and then page after that was an ALTA land title survey. The, the one that's the land title survey is the actual parcel that you would be applying these variances to. It would not be included on the other 12 acres that, that will, that is annexed for future development by Plody.
Okay. Is that different, would that make a different PIN number on these then?
It, it would be the.
The 11 is the building?
Let me take a look at what the PIN number would be on that. Right now, let's see here. Just give me a second.
Chris, this is Kevin. I believe the Althoffer property is confined within the 012 PIN.
It's the 012, yes.
012?
The 012.
So should we make, so actually, the, our, the public hearing, these variances relate only to that section of land, right?
Correct.
So should, we, we probably should note that.
Well, it's not, and it's not even that, that, not even that entire parcel. These parcels are gonna be new parcels eventually. And, and the parcels that we're discussing technically don't exist right now. They, they are part of, they will be two parcels that will be shrunken down into two separate parcels. So if, if you, if you use this ALTA to define it, that would, that's the exact property. To use a PIN, that PIN number still carries over into 12 acres a little bit. But it's, I mean, it, it'll be defined once the plat is recorded.
Okay, fine. So you don't see where we need to exclude the 011 piece of?
You, you can, you can, yes. You can exclude the 011, yes.
Okay. Fine, thank you for clearing that up.
Chris, would it be, would the ALTA legal description be the most accurate?
It is, yeah, it is the, it is the parcel.
Okay. Chairman Brewer, if you're looking for a motion, I would make a motion that we approve the variations for the legal description that falls within the ALTA that was included in our packet and for sake of having to read all of the variations, I would ask that the variations as presented on the agenda under item number three be the variances we approve.
Okay, can we have a vote, please?
Scarpelli?
Does everybody understand that? This is?
Yes.
This is, this is section 3A items, I guess, I, 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 and IV, okay?
Yes.
Scarpelli?
Yes.
Apke? I'm sorry?
Yes.
Stenick?
Yes.
Bernstein?
Yes.
Shock?
Yes.
Musket?
Yes.
Brewer?
Yes. Now we just need to do the finding of facts for the same thing?
Please.
So moved, Scarpelli?
Second.
Who was the second? I'm sorry. Howard?
Howard.
Howard, okay. Scarpelli?
Yes.
Apke?
Yes.
Denick?
Yes.
Bernstein?
Yes.
Shock?
Yes.
Musket?
Yes.
Brewer?
Yes. Okay, thank you. Good project. Chris Renary, do you have other business? Do we wanna ask about the paint on 1 East Main Street?
Well, I mean, it, it's not an agenda item. I don't know if you, if you wanna do a straw poll on, on whether or not it needs?
Yeah, we have a spot to put other, other business in here.
Okay.
Just why don't we do it? Cause I, I don't really think we need a certificate of appropriateness for that because, you know, all it says is, is it's conducive to the neighbors, you know, so.
Yeah.
We may, we may just wanna ask, so.
Okay.
You wanna go ahead?
Yeah, at 1 East Domain, the new owner there was looking to repaint the outside of the building gray with some black accents. And we weren't sure, that would need to go through the, get a certificate of appropriateness from the historic commission or not. If it does, we'll go through the process. It's not a problem.
Yeah. My, my feeling is it's not because it's, we don't really have a big, you know, the historic ordinance does not really relate anything to paint color choices and stuff, other than it states that there's, they should be something that's compatible with the, the neighboring buildings and stuff, so. I don't know, anybody else wanna express an opinion?
Commissioner Scarpelli, I, I don't have an opinion on the paint, but Chris, can you tell me? I stopped by there last week Friday and asked them about how they were gonna trim out the windows that are over the river. And they kinda explained how they were gonna do that, but they, they informed me they're putting And they kind of explained how they were going to do that, but they, they informed me they're putting a second story on the building. Are you aware of that?
Yeah, that would have to come before the commission, before they get approval for that.
Okay.
That's their plan. They're aware of that. That they need to come before you guys to get approval on that.
Okay.
I think, Frank, I think my question was just on the paint and I, you know, they've done a nice job. I was there today. You know, it's a business that was in West Dundee that moved to East Dundee. It's an East Dundee resident that has the shop there and then they're, you know, and you know, I was just trying to expedite the process here a little bit if they want to paint.
Hey, John, it's Brad. I know the paint. Regarding the paint and, Chris, that would, I mean, that could change the look of the exterior there. I, I think we need to review it with staff and see if we do need to bring it through the formal process before.
Okay, fine.
Any further, since it's not on the agenda.
Okay, fine. That's fine. Okay? I just wanted to get an opinion.
Thank you.
Can I hear a, I think we're done. Can I hear a motion for adjournment?
Can I?
Thank you.
Can I interrupt, John, just to?
Yeah.
Another business, this is Jennifer again. I just wanted to point out the fact that with the Plody item, it was very similar to the, to the accessory structure on Maxwellton in the fact that variances were approved prior to the plat of subdivision being approved at the next level. So I just wanted to point that out, that the Maxwellton item was no different than the Altorfer CAT item. And so, once again, I just would urge the commission to maybe reconsider the motion for tabling and vote it up and down. I just wanted to say that one more time. Just, just in, what we do is try to expedite things for residents and provide ultimate best customer service we can. And I don't want anyone to be waiting another month if it's not absolutely necessary. So, thank you.
Jennifer, Commissioner Scarpelli, why are we bringing things before the board before lots are created? This seems very backwards to me. I mean, I understand we want to expedite things, but it just seems, seems odd you'd be making approvals of various various variances and things of that nature before you create the land it's going to go on.
Yes, I know, I know it seems counterintuitive, but oftentimes you will work with draft plats in order to find whether you can secure the approval of the plan commission and of the village board prior to creating the plat of subdivision and reporting it and going through that process. You really need to know that the approving authorities are on board. So yes, sometimes processes run in tandem. But this is often the case on the way things run. So I just wanted to point out once again, the way I see it, the way staff sees it, and urge you to consider expediting this for these residents so that they can make a decision and not have to wait, you know, another month in order to decide how they're going to improve their lot. Not, very many people are improving their lots. And so we want to encourage that whenever possible. If the setback isn't, you know, if they cannot run a hardship, that's one thing. But I don't want to hold it up based on, you know, these reasons. So I just wanted to say that again in other business one more time. And thank you for listening to me.
Am I still on?
Yes.
You are, John. I don't think we, I don't think we've adjourned yet.
No, I know we haven't.
Is there, is there a motion on the table?
No.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Zeris.
Wait, did we motion something?
Yeah.
Adjournment.
Catherine, all in?
All in?
I'm sorry, Catherine. Um, consideration of Jennifer's last discussion and statement, there are times when we don't wait an entire month before we are called to meet again. Is it possible for us to review some more of this information regarding 509 Maxwellton? And then expedite the next PNZ meeting?
I don't have a problem with that. We're doing it all remotely anyway. It doesn't make any difference.
I'm okay with that.
So maybe we just deliberate and we look at some more of the information and possibly try to come to an expedited another meeting, say in a week from tonight or two weeks from tonight. Maybe timeframe that the commissioners all feel that they are more prepared to make the decision?
I think that would be appropriate.
This is Brad. Staff will, you know, talk with the residents on what their next step is here and will, you know, if we need to schedule a meeting here within a week or so, or whenever, we will. But I think we need to talk with the residents on the direction they're going to go based on.
Yeah, and I know it's not the staff's fault that you're getting stuff from all over the place coming in at the last minute, the last minute PowerPoint and all of that kind of stuff. So maybe it would give everybody a chance to get this organized and then we could you know, have a little bit more information in front of us, okay?
Right, because we did, I mean, every day we had something else thrown in our direction. It's kind of difficult from one day until now to put some proper thought and deliberation into this specific issue.
Right. And I mean, I did review the PowerPoint presentation and, and you know, most of that has nothing to do with the variance, you know, so that's you know, I mean, it's, you know, there's just a lot of general questions in there and, you know, the threat of a lawsuit and a bunch of things like that, so. You know, so, you know, I think, I think it needs to kind of just take a deep breath and maybe take a look at it in a week or two, okay?
I'm curious, this is Gwen. Did they start to work on the land or did they, is it water that's?
No, they've been working on it. They've been working, they've been working on it for about three months, it looks like.
It, so it looks like there's a lot of action going on with the trees and so forth.
From what I have noticed in the area, since I'm right down the road from there, yes, they have had a bobcat there and have been clearing out trees and land and such.
I mean, I just think there's other things that need to be addressed. Drainage, et cetera. So I, you know, I think we need to have a better look at it. So let's go, let's go with a two-week down the road goal or a week down the road, whenever we can get more together and and go with that. So. Anybody disagree?
I agree. Just a little bit more time to
Yep.
review the information.
Right. So we have a motion in front of us here.
Ready for motion to adjourn? Roll call?
I think, I think we, yeah.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, good night.
Good night. Good night.
Thank you.